When you're ready.
All right, thank you, Ben. At this time, I'd like to call to order the North Canton Committee, the whole meeting. February first, two thousand twenty-one, seven P M is the time. Ben, will you please call the roll?
Member Strye?
Yeah.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Fulton?
Here.
Member Schreta?
Here.
And member Warren.
Here.
Seven present.
All right, and we have the entirety of this meeting is for ordinance rules. Committee Chairman Strye, this is your meeting.
All right, game on. Okay. Ah, where to start? All right, so. Looking at the Charter. We've Ben and I and some other people as well. Have found a couple of things that we may want to consider, at least talk about taking a second look at or. At least discussing tonight. What we'd like to see changed in those three things, if anything, and then. You could make a motion to change the Charter to put something on the maybe. There's a little committee we could form or ad hoc committee, something like that. So let's look at. There's three areas that we've come up with so far. And if you guys think of any other ones in the Charter that you want to address that you feel are. Perhaps outdated or could be more efficient, now would I guess be the time to do that. But the end of the year, I think with with the way finance. Works that that clearly needs to be looked at. So if you guys would look at page eleven of your Charter. It discusses the duties of the Director of Finance and. As you read through those, it's it's just clearly outdated. And I think with the way that. Throughout the years, the way reports are filed. Be electronically or whatever, or. The more governance we have. On our accounting. There's different filing dates or everything. Maybe maybe we need to address this section. And maybe not be more specific, but but more. Adjustable, something like that. So. What do you guys think of of what's in the Charter versus what we could make it on that to maybe give Gina Gina a little more? Leverage, but I don't know if you guys recall at the end of the year, what we had to kind of do. To. Vote because we have that break where we can't come back. We didn't come back and and there's things that need to be done in the meantime. If anybody wants to speak out about that, go ahead. And Ben, feel free to come in.
Man, I'm not sure I understood your question or your statement.
Well, like my, I think the problem is. And Gina, you may may want to speak on this as well. At the at the end of the year, the Director of Finance has to do certain things. And we had to give her the flexibility to do that. Where it's not really explicitly written in the Charter.
Okay.
To do that.
Okay.
If I may, I think Chairman Shur is referring to point two on the potential points for amendment.
Yes.
So currently. To balance the budget at the end of the year. Their Director of Finance doesn't have that power. It's by the Charter vested in council. Now, council can delegate their powers, but they may only do so on non emergency ordinances. But the problem is that the Director of Finance, Gina, doesn't know. The final numbers to balance the budget until December thirtieth, December thirty first, while you guys are on break.
It was that a problem this year to be able to just have another quick meeting and approve it, or was that too difficult? I'm trying to remember now.
So this year we. What we did was we passed a supplemental appropriation right before you guys went on break that was. As close as our best possible guess. To what? A perfectly trued up budget will be. But I it was not exact.
Yeah. Yeah, here's here's the problem. We were able to fix this. So so let's think of the the end of the year. This is the period between, say, December twenty fourth and January one. We were able to address some of these issues. Because. We were meeting via Zoom.
Right.
Had we had to meet. It could have been far more problematic because people travel during the holidays. And would have been out of town. And unavailable. So what do we think that what do we think? Do we think we ought to extend the authority of the Finance Director to true the budget up into July or January? Shall have reconciled the budget in January for the preceding year? What what kind of language would we take, Ben? You want to refer people to the the section of the Charter?
On page twelve.
Yep.
Yes, so. Personally, if I were to try and come up with a solution for this, my best recommendation would be to amend three oh five. To give the Finance Director some sort of time limited power. To make. The appropriations necessary to balance the end of the budget at the end of the year. So like. From December twenty fifth to December thirty first of each year, the Director of Finance. Has the power to make such supplemental appropriations as are necessary to true up the final budget of that fiscal year.
Did you add a fifth clause?
Yes, so it would be a fifth clause, an additional power for the position.
Okay. All right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, this is Foltz. Do we have an idea what we did this year? Just to recap that? I mean, what did we have? What did Gina have to do? You know, to make this work? I got I can look back myself, I guess, if I needed to. I don't know if you had it handy, Gina or somebody.
Well, so this year we put on the very last meeting before council took their winter break. A supplemental ordinance that we requested emergency approval for. So that was about two and a half to three weeks before month end. And just as a couple of examples, on December twenty eighth, the federal government changed the rules on the CARES Act money. But we already had to have it spent. I could not amend our budget. Also, on the twenty eighth of December, the B W C sent us a refund. But they took from that the premium for the following year. So our budget doesn't reflect any any. Monies appropriated to pay the that premium, but they automatically deducted it from us. So that's something that our auditors are going to have to reconcile because we couldn't amend our budget at that point. So there are some things that usually. We can't. We can't finish up and true up the budget until the final payroll because there's all the holidays. We don't know which police and fire are going to work, which causes overtime, which causes comp time, all those other holiday pays. And. So we usually wait until after the last December payroll, which sometimes could be on the thirtieth of December, thirty first of December. On the other hand, the Stark County Auditor needs it from us before the first of January. So there's a really quick, short timeline in there. I can never tell you what day that is. But it's in the last half of the month.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, Gina, thanks for that. And that's something that happens every year, right? Unfortunately.
Yes.
Okay, is there a way that we do this that you just give us the recap, the first working meeting in January, just show just the public what had to happen? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I believe that's what we did this year in the first. We added those the true up budget to the minutes in January.
Okay. So it's happening regardless. It's just a matter. Do we give you the authority to make to be? To officially do it, you know, in the timeframe?
Correct. And and I wouldn't be able to amend the budget above available resources any, you know, so you still have some limitations there that restrict. I can't. I can't just add in four million dollars unless we have that in revenue, you know, I. It'll it's literally just truing up all the lines, maybe moving between personal services to supplies if we need to, all of those things that are at. Council's legal level of authority in the budget.
Okay, well, I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. History.
Yeah. Hey, Gina, I this is Daryl. I think what you're asking us to do, and again, I'm trying to think of the language we might want to use here. But what we're going to give you the authority to do. Is to. File. All necessary reports. That are related to the end of your business. But officially close that reconcile and close out. The previous, the fiscal year by a date in January, correct?
Yes, I think that I think the piece that we that didn't allow us to do authorize Finance Director to make year end closing adjustments. Was because we can't do that without the emergency clause.
Right.
Right then, I believe that's that's the piece. We could have a meeting, you know, a quick meeting on the thirty or thirty first if you want and do the emergency clause. But we couldn't do that because of that piece. And you can't delegate that authority because it doesn't say that you can.
Well, I think the other problem is this, and I come back to this. It's a little question logistics. You know, I don't know how you pull seven people together. During that week.
New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I just will not do it unless somebody's buying liquor, you know. But, you know, again, I mean, you know, there are businesses that. You know, carry their carry their financial activity in. I mean, they close, they close up, but they they have their final reconciliation in January, and that's really what we're giving you the authority to do. To move such monies, et cetera, for and and we would just have to approve it then. Correct?
Yes, the council would still have to approve it, yes.
Yeah, so we would we would approve it. We're just going to give you the authority to do it. Pending. Reconciliation and final council approval of the previous year's budget. Expenditures.
Gina, what did they do over like in Lewisville and some others other communities? I mean, we're not the only one that has this issue. What do they do?
No, absolutely not. And every Charter is different. So so, you know, you're you're restricted by higher vice code unless you're a charter city, and literally every charter city is different. So I believe in Lewisville, we would just do the year end appropriations would say authorize the Finance Director to make year end appropriations, and then I would add them to the minutes, the first meeting in January. So that they could see all of those line items and approve those in the minutes.
That's the motion.
There you go. And when do they come back in January? I mean, right away or?
Yeah, they actually don't. They don't take any breaks, right? And usually like holidays, the Mondays and January, February, if those are holidays, they they take off or reschedule, but they don't have long breaks.
So the reason we can't use the a similar system to Lewisville is that our Charter in. Two oh five has a different provision that limits. Council from delegating its authority in emergency ordinance. So council can only delegate its powers in non emergency ordinance. But we're not ready for end of year appropriations. In. At the beginning of November, when it you would have to introduce a non emergency.
Well, I think what you're also asking, Ben, is that we don't. We don't do this. We we exempt this from emergency approval. We only need to to approve it once, correct?
Correct.
So so there are really two parts. We're going to reconcile, authorize reconciliation. Adjustment reconciliation, final report, and that particular report does not have to be approved by emergency. One reading. Does that square with state law?
The appropriation ordinance would have to be approved by council.
Yes.
And and we balance and reconcile every month. But appropriations is a completely sets of fifty seven oh five, completely separate section of a higher vice code.
So. The power to appropriate is councils. What we're really looking to do is give. The Finance Director. A very limited, hope probably time locked. Power to also appropriate. For the sole purpose of balancing the budget at the end of the year.
Makes sense. We can work on the language. My my intention is not to put this forward today. It's just to discuss it, so. We can work on the language.
Let's pitch some language. Let's get some language together so we can consider it in the future.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Also, be aware that will this hold up even if the worst of Finance Directors, the worst of councils? I'm sure they put this in place, not just for great Finance Directors and great council. But for, you know, that this is being able to be handled for the community. So keep that in mind, not just the. A one shot and done type of thing, just so. You know, these things can get carried through.
You know, Mark, I would remind you that our councils are always superior to those in Lewisville.
I didn't bring that up at all.
Well, that that is a great point, Mark. I mean, we do have to look at worst case scenario.
And that's why I don't think any of us would propose that the way to fix it would be to. Remove the emergency limitation on council delegating its powers. Like, we want to maintain that. And while that would be an easy fix, it is an important check on. The worst possible counsel.
Okay.
You put around some words, Matt, and see where we come back to that. If that's everybody's agreement. It's like we're all kind of just. Sitting here. I mean, I don't have my chart in front of me. I'm not like there. I don't carry my back pocket every every day, so I don't have it in front of me here. Or he's a member, I think he doesn't carry it, but so I'd have to look, you know, exactly.
Right.
See, exactly. But let's put some words together and then put it out in front of us. And see the changes, you know, that are that are kind of factual. That's okay. We've got some time, right?
Yeah, there's yeah, there's no hurry on this. This we have. I mean, we have for this, we have to begin the next year, this year, so I mean, plenty of time for that.
Well, here here's here's the thing is is that. You've got. You're going to have to go through probably. Well, let's let's take us back. You would really like to have. This change done by the time we go to spring break and authorized for the ballot in August.
Oh, good point.
Is that if you.
You're not going to do that in August and pay for a special election.
No, 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 but you've got you've got an election coming up this year. You you're. Yeah, but so you've got to get it on the ballot. The deadline for it is in August.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Deadline is August, so you want it on the ballot in November, so the when the Board of Elections does it, you can roll it out in December and use it.
That's a good idea. We should be able to do that.
Want to have another read of what we did this last year. And again, what we're what we're other thing we're really trying to do is 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 to consider. Zoom going away. And the New Year's Eve council meeting. So what I would recommend is we try to get some language together and get this back to us, Ben. And let's let's try to get it teed up for, you know, we can deliberate on it, but you really want it done by. June. And it's not that far off.
Okay.
Four months.
Right. All right, there were any other comments on this section?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, I'm good.
All right, let's let's look to. Page eleven would be the next one. And it's the. The organizational structure. Ben, you can speak to this. You've got some good. Points on this.
Chairman Shur is referring to number one on the possible points for amendment. So this is not a. Hampering our functions amendment so much as a. Accuracy amendment. So. I'd actually start on page twelve with section three oh six departments. Our Charter says that there shall be a Department of Service and a Department of Safety, and it shall include. And each of those shall include these subdivisions. Well. Since this Charter was written, various councils have, over the course of time. Raised most of these divisions to the rank of department. Such that. The Department of Service has no divisions left in it. And the Department of Safety has health sanit health and sanitation and welfare, but the city doesn't. Currently run those ourselves anymore. We contract those out with Stark County Health Department and Stark County Welfare Services. So. This is more of a. Are we interested in? Having the Charter more accurately reflect our. Current organizational structure. But as I said, it's not actually hampering anyone's ability to effectively perform their duty.
It's a clean up.
Honestly, if you ask me, I don't know why it's even in there at all.
Good point.
Good point. That's a good point.
I don't know what twenty years from now will bring, but I'm sure it'll probably be different than what we're doing today.
Right, you're always going to be changing it. That's the case.
Yeah, so the simplest solution may be to just simplify it down to shall consist of such departments as may be provided for by ordinance.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's clean and simple.
Any other thoughts on that one?
Well, yeah, the the other thing is this is that, you know, if you look at some of that stuff. You know, I. You know, what if we would ever find ourselves in a situation where we want to outsource our our services? So, you know. You may want, you may not want to have the departments enumerated in your Charter.
I think that's what Ben was saying, is just specified by ordinance.
Yes. Specified by ordinance.
That would work.
You know, you get into, we get into a, if we would ever find ourselves in a horrible budget crisis, for example. You know, you don't want to have to mess around with a charter. You want to be able to do it by ordinance.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, yeah.
And as as Mark said earlier, as long as Ben, if you have the availability, show us the Charter and then change you want to make and come back with this later. Even for the next discussion point, I think that's going to be something we all could utilize.
Yeah, I'll work with. Crew Gak, and by the next. Count committee meeting, we'll have. Real language for you.
Right, or whenever you're ready. If it's not ready by then, just somewhere in the near future. Thank you, Ben.
All right, let's move to the last point. The third point is on, I think, I believe it's page seven. And it's the difference between resolutions and ordinances. So I have a historical question that I haven't asked yet. When did we start voting on resolutions? On a on a like a three reading basis?
We haven't done it that way consistently. We've done it both ways, actually, didn't we?
It seems like I did, yeah.
I can remember when I served my first two years on council, it was one and done on resolutions. Yeah. What? How did we? How did we start reading them three times? I don't remember when that happened.
Jeff, I don't remember either, to be honest.
That's I don't. I don't know.
I think it had. I think it had to do with the legal interpretation of the Charter.
Well, go to go to section two oh five on page seven. Last paragraph says three readings on resolutions.
I believe it was part of either the two twenty seventeen of the twenty seventeen amendment. That it added. A three reading.
Maybe we ought to go back to one.
That's what I say.
So.
Okay.
I would agree to going back to one, but I. Having seen some of the things. That historically were passed on resolution and probably should not have been. I would say that we should also specify. Since they only need one reading, they are limited in. What they can be used for.
Yeah, I would. I would agree with that.
Why don't we specify that?
So.
You know.
In my. In my research, generally what I've found is that. Ordinances are meant to be. Standing law, something someone could theoretically violate and therefore have committed a misdemeanor. Resolutions are intended more to be statements of the opinion of council. So. For example, the collective bargaining agreements, your guys' only power is to say whether or not you like them. So that would be a resolution because it's just council declaring, yes, we agree or no, we disagree.
It's not. Legislation.
Yes, it's just an opinion of the legislative body.
I got a question. Is the three readings causing us harm or helping us or hurting us? I mean, is it making a big difference or a minor difference?
So.
Pace of government.
We get asked to approve things by, for example, the county asks us to approve the estimated tax. Property tax rates every year. They tell us that that has to be a resolution because they anticipate that resolutions are. Simply to pass just. The legislative body stating this is our opinion. But we, for the past several years, have had to add an emergency clause to the standard resolution that they provide us because for our municipality. Resolutions have to be passed either on emergency or with three reading.
Okay.
So it's mostly things like that where council's only. Power is approval, and it takes us longer than the people who are asking us for approval anticipate it will.
So so by adding an emergency, we can just whip it through just as quick if we want?
Yes, but that requires. At least six people to be able to attend the meeting and occasionally they give us very small windows. Of time to approve it. So again, this is thinking about a post COVID era when we're all in person. If the county gives us five days to. And we have to have six people.
Right. So it's just a matter of figuring out what goes into the category of each.
Correct.
Aren't you, Ben, why don't you whip up some language that. Returns us to the old order. And specifies the type of legis the type of activity that might be appropriate. For a resolution and require one reading.
I might add that council might want to include things of a ceremonial nature under their resolutions.
Yeah, expressions of opinion ceremonial. Required concurrence with county or state government. I mean, what would happen seriously if if we rejected one of those county? Those county.
They wouldn't distribute the property taxes that they collected on our behalf for all the levies.
Wow.
We don't want to miss that one.
No, you don't.
Jeez.
No. So I think that really sort of underscores why we don't want to putz around with it. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I think the other thing is this, in, in sort of practical terms is, you know, what if you had three sort of really anti-tax or four anti-tax members of council who were mad at the county? And just, you know, wouldn't let the thing pass on emergency, you know? What a nightmare that could be. Think about it a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three separate readings, you gotta, the mayor's gotta sign it and then it doesn't become, let's assume the mayor doesn't want to sign it because he's mad. So we, we get to wait ten days and then it becomes effective, it becomes law, but it's not effective for thirty more days after that. You could go weeks. When's the last time council uh, had a resolution that they supported something? Uh, can you recall?
Didn't you just have a resolution?
There were eleven, eleven last year.
Yeah.
Well,
Six were on emergency.
The most recent was, we just did three, one for each of the police department collective bargaining unit.
Yep.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, Matt, um, all this stuff here. We have to go and put this on the uh, the ballot, right?
Yes.
To get this changed. What's the cost us to put this on the ballot? Anybody know? Can you?
If it's part of the November ballot, uh, it, it, it's, it's very little if anything. Because they're going to do the election anyway. I mean, they charge us to set up poll locations, poll workers, all that infrastructure that they have to move ballots in and out is when they, you know, they hit us with that. So you're looking at, and because we're a nonpartisan, politically affiliated entity, we don't have primaries. Um, and about the only time that we could get something on a ballot in May would be if there was a municipal court uh, uh, position that was being primaried. And then they would be setting up for those judges to vote, you know, in, to vote on judges in North Canton. So it's really rare uh, to have something available unless, you know, somebody else is doing something like, say the school was gonna do a special levy, a special election in February. We could dovetail in it, but then we would end up splitting the cost with the school.
Cause I know from doing school stuff, we had to pay to get things on ballot and it wasn't cheap. You know, and this, this stuff is like dust on the picnic table. I mean, it could wait if, if that's the case.
That was one of my, my concerns too. Yeah.
Yeah.
That, I, I agree with that, Mark. That was one of my concerns because you don't want to spend money to put, you know, semantics of, of the lists of departments versus subdepartments. I mean, that's just silly.
Yeah, I mean, we have other things that we could easily forget about this stuff. We're getting things run in a nice manner, but uh, if it doesn't cost us anything, it's just some kind of legislative thing.
Right. What did we put on up two years ago and it passed pretty easily? What was that in regard to?
Well, that was, that was probably the charter in itself, I believe.
Yeah, I think you're right. We had made those like five or six recommendations and we weren't sure that people would read them, but they did in the past. Yeah.
Right. And at one point, someone tried to change the, the charter by having the mayor do a four-year thing and that was rejected. That was like in sixteen or fifteen. So there, there are, and you have to get so many signatures to do that and so on. So there are, um, you know, attempts to do this kind of thing. But if this doesn't cost anything, this is great. But outside of that, you know, I wouldn't spend too much money. I'm changing three little things here that don't, and that's just my opinion of trying to be
I agree too. I agree with that, Mark.
Yeah, so I did, uh, yes, Chairman Schreit asked, had asked me this, so I did um, look into it. Um, there is a small filing fee um, to add something to an election that's already happening. Um, but there is a possibility of it potentially being waived since we are a political entity. Um, I do not have final costs because the final costs are also dependent on um, how long the language is. The text of what we actually want to appear on the ballot.
Maybe we can find that out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do, we'll do more research on that.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yeah, I, I don't want to spend money to, to fix the department language. That doesn't make sense.
I mean, if we get a whole bunch, you know, if it does, maybe we'll have a couple more in the next couple of years and we can all do a bunch at one time.
Sure.
But if we're, we're, how many years out now? We're seven, six years out from the actual charter review.
So we, if we do have things that need change, we, we could change them, but you know, we should probably look at the whole thing and and get more than three little specks of dust rather than uh, you know, pay for three things that I don't think anybody's really you know, losing that sleep over.
Let's, let's, let's remember where this conversation began. We do have an issue that we need to reconcile regarding finance. So it does, I think the costs are absolutely nominal if it's on the November ballot. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll confirm that. Yep.
Yeah, we'll find out what nominal word.
So,
Yeah, yeah.
Now, recommendation would be, let's get this thing, get that language cleaned up with the idea that we'll have it done by late spring, we're comfortable with it, we'll vote it and get it on the November ballot in time for use by year's end. And we can wrap anything else in we want. Same process. But let's take care of the answer. That's the one that we really need to get after.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep. Okay, and then the follow-up on all this is, is how do we, how do we want to proceed with this? Do we want to name some people to review this? I mean, I, I think it's kind of silly to do a whole charter review on it, but it would also be nice to have some public feedback as well.
Well, let's do this then. Why don't, why, let me offer this suggestion. Why don't we get the language squared away that we're all comfortable with? And why don't we hold a couple of public hearings prior to our, our, our council meetings, just like we would if it was a zoning change? Or some
There you go. That's a good idea, Darryl. I like that.
Public hearing. See who, see who enters in the door.
Where we want to get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's get the cost and get the language and see what we're, where we're at. That sounds like a good plan.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
Hey, one thing that I have thought of, and I think, I don't know if we tried to get it on before or not, but you know how after you're elected, you have that next month and then we always have that date that is like within three days of like December one or whatever? And I feel like, um, I don't know, like sometimes it's been on a Sunday. It just has been strange. One time, I don't know, I felt like it was like a Friday night we were supposed to meet and I didn't know if there's a way that you could just say like the first meeting in December or something like that.
Hey Steph, you bring up a great point because aren't, aren't we the only subdivision in the county?
That's with his then. Yes.
Yeah. I remember, because didn't I have to drive down to the Board of Elections to get all of our
Yes.
Certificates of election before we could be sworn in?
Yes.
That's true.
And sometimes they weren't ready and they're like getting, especially after last election, remember?
Yeah.
With the recounts.
Yeah, that's right. That's what put us behind.
Yeah. I think that's the organizational meeting and I think you're right. Normally it's within the first ten or fifteen days of the calendar year for, for other entities. Okay. It just is so strange. We've always had three and I feel like we always scramble or, you know, it's like extra, I don't know.
Even if it's in the first two weeks of December, it gives you more time than three days. That's
Well, and then we could, and then we could really deal with it on one of the, the meeting nights, if, if we wanted.
But guys, keep in mind, you, that organizational meeting is tied to your term of office. Your term of office starts December first.
Oh, December one. You're right, Pat. Everybody else starts
January one.
January one, that's
That's something that you wanted to change that I don't even know where that is. If that's in the charter, it must be somewhere.
In the charter, technically their term of office is until their replacement is sworn in. And then the charter was amended in um, nineteen eighty to include the uh, the organizational meeting will take place in the first three days of December. And as a history fun fact, our very own Darryl Revolt was actually the first ever councilperson sworn in in December.
That explained it.
It also adds it was under a full moon.
Well, could we do something where it's like the first meeting or the first, I don't know?
I'm trying to find that sec- does anyone know that section here?
Don't.
I wonder why they did that then. I mean, before it said until the one was replaced, which didn't seem bad.
Right.
Decide to have your meeting. So why was it replaced? Maybe the president was leaving and he didn't want to schedule a meeting.
Yeah. And then, so I wonder why we're the only one. So why are we the only one that replaces December as opposed to January?
Here's the, here's the reason for that, Stephanie. That's a, that's a great question. Remember that we have a separation of power and we have got in the habit of getting these budgets done relatively early.
Right.
But we've also had councils where we've had to adopt a temporary budget and the final was adopted into the, into the next term. This whole idea was that you had a, you couldn't have a, you wanted to have your council help set your budget in December if there was a problem. That was really the issue.
Hmm, okay.
Was, it was a budget control issue. I don't think I've said this very well, but that's really what it, what it's all about, is to, is to give the new council control of the budget before the year starts. It's
Well, so, so I guess it brings up a question. Should the new council have control of that budget when they've been in office yet but a week or two?
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's the open question, I guess. But you know, you could have, uh, you could have a situation where the town's up in arms because you've had a profligate bud council that's spending money left and right and
Yeah.
Buddy out and the new guys come in and get control.
Well, but at the end of the day, what you're doing is you're, you're, the mayor's submitting a balanced budget to council to approve, but no- nothing really is spent.
That's right.
Until
Might you have, might have a new mayor who got, you know, the old mayor gets tossed.
Right.
Third, third reading of the budget is at the end of November, so that it is effective thirty-four days after the third reading.
Yeah.
So that's before December. So really, that doesn't make sense then. Then the budget's already done.
And we really shouldn't carry legislation over to a new council because it is a new council.
Right, right. Know that. Right, right. I'm starting to make sense.
Well, maybe that's something we look at, that we get, come more in line with everybody else in the county.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just make it the first, just make it the first five days so you get in. You know, make it the first, for seven and you're in and you're sworn in. You don't have to worry about getting sworn in on January first.
Right.
You're just in.
Yeah, Darryl, I agree. I think if it's five days or whatever, it's not three, that gives us some flexibility.
Right.
Or could it, could we, could we read it to the first meeting, I guess, then?
Well, you will have a first meeting that's the first seven days.
Right, be surprised.
We can simplify it to like the first Monday of December or something like that.
Yeah, there you go.
And, and, and your organizational meeting has nothing to do with being sworn in. You can be sworn in at any time. You don't have to be sworn in on that day at that place. I got sworn in uh, you know, four days before the organizational meeting. The oath of office just has to be administered by somebody. Doesn't have to be January first. It could be December twenty-eighth, if you guys, or any other date. As long as you're sworn in before you go to, you have your first meeting.
Well, but, but the requirement is, Pat, is you have to have in hand that certificate of election from the Board of Elections, correct?
Yes, or you have to have the certificate of elections from the Board, but that has nothing to do with being sworn in.
Yeah.
So could you theoretically be sworn in on, I don't know, January sixth, right before the, the council meeting starts?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, and you know, back in an era when I got on, there was, you know, concern that, you know, you know, in the, just in the three days, December first, second, third. Gosh, you know, what happens if there's a, a, a catastrophic event on December first? And you're having the organizational meeting December third. You've got, you know, you don't have new council members in. What if they're not sworn in? What if you wait and do that ceremonial thing and you have the judge come in on December third? Alright, so how, you may need to take action December first, so you know, a number of us did that, got sworn in before December first, so the event that something happened on December first and a meeting was called, there is this chaos of who's sworn in, who isn't sworn in. We were already done sworn in. But if you stretch that period out, you increase, you know, the timeline that something could happen uh, in that, in that window. That's why most places, they get, it all happens on the same day. You know, January one is when their term starts, they're sworn in and they just start January one. Whenever, whenever their first meeting is, doesn't matter. They're sworn in, their term of office starts January one. You could meet January eighth, but you're sworn in December thirty-first, your term starts January first, you're an official member of council January one. If an emergency pops up on January second, you are legally authorized to meet and vote and handle things. But your first meeting normally wouldn't be till January eighth or whatever. It would be nice that the city could get onto the program that everybody else in the county, in Ohio, in the nation are on.
I agree. I agree with that too.
But, but, but then, Pat, we'd have to extend the term limit to December thirty-first.
Instead of November thirty, yeah.
Yeah, that's where that part about what you had before about you still serve until your successor is named, how that was really pretty smart. Originally, when that was in there, you're, it, you may not be able to do it just because of that, Doug. It's a good point.
Well, why, why couldn't we do what everyone else is doing? Like somehow they figured it out.
You'd have to change it. No, because, because those people are still in, council members till December thirty-first, because their term is December thirty-first.
Yeah, they would be there till the end.
We, we, we run, we run on that term limit, uh, you know, which, you know, to me, you know, I, I, I've always felt it's kind of unique. We do it December first, so, because we're the only ones getting, um, you know, sworn in or, or having our organizational meeting at that time. I think it's unique to North Canton. I'd rather have it December first, me, this past whatever thirteen terms, than January, come in in January, do something ceremonial and then have a meeting later. That's just me, but I think it works, what we do. It's just, it's just the, the hastiness of having to have a meeting within three days and how that works out.
Yeah, that was kind of crazy. But I like the idea of the Monday or going with, yeah, what, what everybody else is doing, but if that's too cumbersome. I mean, we could certainly do it. Okay, well, something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely. That was a good point.
You know, hey, just, you know, Pat's, Pat's touched on, on, on something again. Uh, we just, as we talk about this, we really want to make sure we understand that, and, and let me give you another example in a minute, but you really want to make sure that people are, we, we define the date, you take office, you can be sworn in prior to that, you can organize anytime after that. But remember under our charter too, that we have a clear line of succession. So let's say you have a mayor, you don't, you want to make sure that you've got a, a president of council sworn in because if something would happen, your mayor, for whatever reason, becomes incapacitated. Got somebody you can kick upstairs. Now, having said that, having said that, the charter also does say that in the absence of the mayor, the director of administration shall serve.
Right.
Oh, well, enough, enough.
Okay.
All good points, Matt.
Yep, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Um, well, let's work on the language and we'll bring it back uh, at a future meeting again.
Okay.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, a- anything else, chairman?
I'm all set. I think, as, as long as you guys are. I think that's, uh, I appreciate everybody's time there.
Okay. Pat, Darryl, anybody else? Any comments? Alright, guys. I appreciate it. Um, well, that concludes our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell Mike Warren.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? We are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.